All right. One. Gentlemen, we need to order the first time you know generous improvement minutes of three from the second from here. So I hear any amendments to changes to the minutes? Not hearing any others in favor of adoption. Keep my saying that.
Hi.
Those opposed of what you have. So number two is have a discussion. The Stratford Regional Planning Commission for getting our C D B G capacity. For an initiative for housing policy and practice of St. Anne's College, we don't have a project in furtherance. There's zoning atlas. Doug.
Thank you. Mr. It's delighted to meet you. We're going to start with some introduction.
Yeah, I want you to introduce yourselves.
Yeah, sure. My name is Alyssa Margolin. I serve as director of the Initiative for Housing Policy and Practice at St. Anne's College.
Thank you.
My alma mater.
My dad was these long, long time ago.
Yeah.
Not as long.
Oh, we felt that.
Good morning. I'm Jen Sis. I'm director of the Stratford Regional Planning Commission.
Okay, so what do we what are we going on? I've read the project goals. Is it this atlas? What are they going to do with this atlas once they create it? That's what I want to know. It's like it's.
Yeah, so are we have an atlas. It is two hundred and sixty nine jurisdictions in all two hundred and thirty four municipalities. The entire and even in the unincorporated communities in New Hampshire. So the entire landmass of the state has been researched, catalogued and portrayed. And my intern team just started yesterday to make sure that the updates are starting for twenty twenty five and making sure that we have a comprehensive, true sense of what our zoning looks like around the state. And the challenge that we've had is not in the researcher, the quality of the maps. It's how to make it a friendly tool for the public so that they can get more involved in stewarding their communities. And so that's when I reached out to my old colleague Jen Sis to say, what could we use this atlas for? For public input and so that we can be more of a partner with our communities.
Yeah. And so from our perspective, we're embarking on an update to the regional plan. And as part of that, it includes during some public outreach and engagement. And so we looked at this and said, this is a good opportunity to collaborate. Where we can use our planning process and our outreach and engagement platform and expand that a little bit more. And use the atlas as a tool. It would serve two purposes for us. It'd be a mechanism to frame some conversations about housing, housing we need in our communities. What some of the changes are that we could be helping communities with. And then in turn, for the initiative, they would be getting some feedback on how they could make the tool more user friendly, how they can help get it out there so that more people have access to to the to the atlas. So it just looked at it as there's an opportunity here to build some conversations and strengthen the work that we're each already doing.
There was a lot of changes. The legislature is looking right now to zoning across the entire state. So is this like an ongoing thing that the college is doing that? That because, you know, zoning laws change in communities all the time, you know, so I'm trying to figure out what what's the practical application of what it is you're trying to do.
This is an excellent question. So there the the idea that we so we have these challenges on how to steward our communities. Where do we invest in water sewer? Where do we preserve our rural character? Where do we make sure we have conservation and places for recreation? And where do we build housing? And all of these are tensions that you guys are always wrestling with and trying to answer. You know, your community's desires, right? And so the question was, can we see a picture of our community so we know that what we're what we're working with? And so the college invested in a project to bring to hire researchers, empower students to do the outreach and to map that all so that we could see it. And that research tool is, you know, is a wonderful body of research that is now in all fifty states. We were the second state in the nation to launch an atlas project after Connecticut. And that's because you know your zoning and your your regional planning commission knows your zoning. But we are trying to find a tool to engage your public in an interactive way so that they can say, no, I want my Little League fields here. I want the farming community here. So that we're just having a more knowledgeable conversation. And so, yeah, we're really proud of this. The college is really proud of it. And now we need to make sure that we're using it. It's not just sitting in a, you know, on in a link online.
Right. You can kind of just ask. How are the cities and towns greeting this information?
Maybe it's better for you then.
Sure. I I don't think that there's any concern from the cities or towns other than making sure that their data is represented correctly. And so that's something where I know we've connected with the initiative in the past to help ensure that they have accurate information. The first effort to develop the atlas, the entire like this big monster spreadsheet was shared with the planning commissions. And we in turn shared it with our communities to get their their feedback, their review, and that opportunity to do some Q A Q C to make sure it's fairly representing each community. And I think, you know, by nature, we approach things regionally. It's one of the things that's really beneficial is being able to see how your community fits within the larger landscape. So often, hopefully not often, but on occasion you may see one community that's saying, this is an area where I see an opportunity for commercial growth or a residential growth. And the neighboring community, we're going across the line and said, no, this is where we want conservation. And tonight you've got communities that are working against each other. And so this allows the people to kind of see what the other is doing and plan more effectively together.
And so they're excited about this? They're excited to use this tool?
That's a great question. And I think that's part of what like the outreach is going to delve into is like the degree to which they can engage with it. And I think that's part of it is just building that awareness and that interaction and getting some feedback.
I can see where it could act as it could act as a time saver if
Yeah.
If municipalities who who share borders are discussing the extension of water and sewer and some infrastructure and they want to know. You know, I years ago, we used to have to go to the neighbor neighboring community and look at their zoning map and try to figure out what they had going on or what not going on, because everybody's in their own little silo.
Yeah.
So I can understand the value of that.
I think there's also value to individual homeowners or folks that are looking to purchase property or folks who are looking to build or develop. It gives them a way to look at a broader landscape and get an idea of, you know what? There are some opportunity here. Maybe this is where I'm going to look and target that investment that I want to make.
Okay, so what kind of money are we talking about you want to have to be that you're asking us to apply for on your behalf?
Do you want to do?
There is a, yeah, the planning grant is pretty formulaic. So, yeah, yeah, the planning grants, I think, are a total of twenty five thousand. They're a small grant. We have already talked to the staff at C D F A and they have encouraged us to pursue this. They're they're the ones to say, you know, you should talk to the county about being the applicant. So that's where we're at. I will say in terms of the administration is a lot easier because it is just a planning grant. But the application isn't much different than any other C D B G application. So, you know, listed out kind of the steps that we would need to go through in collaboration during the application phase. And that's the heaviest ask of you as the commissioner.
So if we go ahead and say yes to this, we're going to really get a call down the lane, Diane, and deal with it.
Well, I think Jen would do it, right?
Yeah, we would. We could do the administration for yes.
Yeah. Okay. It's not it's not fun. And it it appears, you're absolutely right. I mean, from my experience and Diane's and your experience, the process appears well, it appears repetitive for what we've done with all of our other when we sponsored other C B D G type projects. Little gentleman, you have any other questions?
Yeah, I I've been around zoning for since since inception and you know, before Farmington, what seventy nine? So I've been and I see where because of our policies, we've actually driven up the cost of building and, you know, like like Farmington, half of it or quite a bit of it is three acre per residence. I mean, that's that's insane. I mean, you're and of course I work with Kyle all the time on his own board now and he's a big help and and I just, we need to get a plan. And that's why the legislature is getting involved. I, you know, I was part of that. I was. That's where I was. And, you know, we we can't keep doing what we're doing because we're, you know, we're driving up the cost. We're going to be like California, which, you know, that's why you got homeless. I mean, it's it caused there's a lot of cause and effect. So and this atlas is supposed to is it's just a accumulation of all the zoning laws. Is that is that basically what this is?
Yes, cataloguing all of the zoning laws and ordinances around the state so you can see and work with it and have to. It's a tool.
Right. So you know, you're going to make recommendations based on what you see?
Your public is.
Yes.
Public. So in other words, it's feeding them to see what what was done in other place, which we do already in a lot of cases.
Right.
I mean, you get case law especially.
Right.
You know, that that we see and we see the law change like variances, which is a frigging nightmare. But I mean, it works, but
I understand.
But it's it's getting easier. I I think you'd agree.
Uh, yes.
Because we see the problem and bring up that, look, if you don't build more housing, you know, you're it. It's very detrimental to the community.
Yeah. And I think one of the benefits of the tool and getting it out there is to raise awareness of where there is opportunity for housing and where there are constraints that have been created through zoning. And I think so. I think that's one of those those objectives and opportunities for making sure that this is updated. I mean, I know Farmington does still have some three acre zoning, but they're a model community in that you just went through a whole rezoning in the town center to really increase opportunity in the town center. So something like this would highlight, you know, you would stand out amongst your neighbors as as having those opportunities.
Matter of fact, I just talked with the Rochester mayor and, you know, we'd like to maybe have him extend his sewer up in on Route eleven, I mean, you know, to to encourage business because you need a balance of commercial and residential right now or cottage. Cottage town, you know, it's cottage community and support, you know, businesses in other towns. And that's that's very, you know, that that doesn't work very well.
And I know Route eleven was one of those areas that was part of the rezoning to increase some densities and opportunities. And without that, with the sewer extension, it's going to be challenging.
They have to do it. And develop just like we we have a project here that we're working on. We have zoning, we have water and sewer, which is so such an important infrastructure. So I mean, and there's good water up there. Matter of fact, we supply water Rochester water.
All right. So I unless you gentlemen have no objection to this, we'll just move forward with it.
Need a motion, honor?
Yeah. To go along with the grant.
Okay.
Okay, so the discussion.
So we'll work with with staff to schedule a hearing and everything.
And just work directly with Diane.
I do.
Thank you for your thoughtful passing. Good conversation in the form of the working on this.
Oh, all in favor of the motion?
There we go.
Thank you.
Sheriff's law too.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll take up the sheriff next then. I four.
Nice to meet you.
Sheriff, what we got going on? Are you right? And assuming you want to use the state bid, right?
Wow.
Well.
Close.
All right. I'll pass that out, Sheriff.
That'd be great.
I have one. Yeah, I'll just hold it here. Well, you're on, Sheriff.
Thanks for having us to talk about vehicle purchases. We have approved three sport, the sport utility vehicles or police interceptors and two vans. And what we would like to do, what you see here is the state bid, that's their Irwin price. And then this McGovern M H Q price. So what we are hoping to do is buy them from M H Q, even though it's slightly slightly
More money.
More money. They will do all the upfitting, complete. Everything.
So we don't have to pay for it and have somebody downstairs do it like we used to.
Correct. We don't. We we don't have the
We don't have the capacity.
The capacity. So if we bought it through the state bid, we'd need to use Nivo, which you'll see the upfitting costs there, which is actually more than the upfitting costs for M H Q. So the total prices there comes is very
Yeah.
Small difference.
Yeah.
So
Okay.
Any questions about those? So the van is also just that slight more fifty seven, one eighty six at M H Q to fifty six, four eighty eight at for the state bid.
Okay. All right, which one? I'm sorry, Sheriff, just just so I understand, who's M H Q?
So the McGovern M H Q out of Marlboro, Mass.
Okay.
A lot of a lot of places have been getting their vehicles there because of them.
One stop shopping.
Exactly.
You purchase the vehicle, they help fit it. So you drive down. We use them our last year.
I was going to say. M H Q, but it came directly from M H Q.
So what's two hundred dollars extra?
No, hundred, no.
Um.
Totally.
Well, sixty three, six twenty four versus.
I live in a hotel for all three. Because that's got that they're outfitting the vehicle, right?
Well, I was looking at.
Cages and.
Cages lights, sirens.
So about um, for for the three cars, about a thousand dollars more total.
Yeah, if you get the service, the service for it.
And they're they're very responsive. We used M H Q last time around. And if we had a couple of minor issues, they sent a technician all the way up here. Right on site. We didn't have to go back and forth.
You know, when when I get something like this, I like to see what what the fleet looks like, how many miles.
I would.
You know.
We are working on that.
I mean, you know, you, we need to know all the information, which is kind of.
I I can get that to you. I have a full fleet rundown with updated miles.
We should have that
Yep.
In hand so we can make a better decision.
I can go. I can go print that right now.
I think the the key with this is that in the budget, yeah, that that information went with the with the budget.
Okay.
So the, yeah.
Yeah, that was there. We we had it in the budget. So the advantage we'll have Diane is that we can pursue the loan with this all equipped. And you know what I mean?
Yeah. So I would need, as we had emails back.
I spoke with the sales rep yesterday and explained that we were.
Yeah. So, yeah, I would need the
Full invoice.
Invoice for not only the vehicles, but the upfitting as well. Yeah.
And that way we can, you know, that's the way it's budgeted. So that way we can, you know, fit that in with the budget. Could I just ask one other question of what what's the delivery schedule?
I'm not sure about that. I I have an email into him and said, just curious, you know, what you have for inventory, what kind of lead time it is? I know in twenty one, when we did this, there was that shortage for micro jets.
Yeah.
And it took five months. I don't foresee it being that long this go around. I think inventory is kind of gotten a little more robust. But I'm I'm waiting for an answer from the gentleman.
Right.
Just the delivery dates, respective delivery.
That's that's one of the things obviously we'll need because that that will dictate when we'll approach. You know, the bank to, you know, for the financing. So we'll we'll just need to add idea of the available.
I should have that today.
Chances are, from the way it appears, a lot of the stuff's right in stock. You know, things that weren't available, you know, that you had to look around for. All of a sudden, now I'm looking and they're everywhere. And I was talking about my own.
I went through that too. I
My own truck.
In fact, I said they didn't have one. And I and this was in Manchester.
My truck, there was only one. You know, only one that I can find that was what I wanted. So I was just curious.
As of April, when I got the quote, they had inventory, but that's, you know, and the quote was good for sixty days. So I think we have three weeks before the quote expires. So whatever transpires today, I can get better numbers or better.
I think it's just delivery information.
Yeah.
So Diane.
Yeah, the timing is kind of critical. So because there'd be one more step and with a a loan through the bank, the commissioners would have to approve the loan as well at a meeting. So there's that that stuff as well.
Is this going to replace vehicles?
Yes.
Okay. And also, did you check into leasing the vehicles?
We that's part of what what you're going to authorize today is is both those is the financing option.
Okay.
And then Diane will will pursue both A and A of B, right?
Yeah, because you know how you're going to use the vehicles and, you know, you can justify that.
Yeah, Diane will pursue both angles.
Most recently, the leasing costs have been more.
More expensive.
They usually are.
Yeah.
But your motion will provide both options, you know, and then and then remember, we have to report back to you again for the approval.
Correct.
So we'll have the options available to you. But since the last few times, the options have been obvious.
So I'll make that motion.
All right. So I got a motion to waive the bid. Move forward with them and have the options presented to the commissioner and appreciate data secondary. Got any further discussion? No, okay. That requires a roll call, Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Myself is in motion endless. Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. As soon as you can get back to.
I'm going to call him right now. I I think we were presenting this today and whatever.
We we can, you know, get it approved. Diane can start on her stuff.
Yeah, I'll get you an actual invoice and some delivery dates.
That would be great.
Perfect. After that, it's pretty easy.
Yeah, it's really simple. You guys, it's it's just a matter of us doing our part. You guys are all set. You won't even have to come back.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Have a nice day, guys.
All right, item three now is Captain Emergency Warming Center. The meeting with the mayors and city managers and I had offered, volunteered to put together a plan for a new emergency warming center on their behalf. So did that work? The plan is for is to is to construct a new building somewhere in Stratford County. It's a ten thousand square foot building. Initially, we had I had worked on the twofold number one, a one story building or a two story building. I opted for the one story for staffing reasons. And I had asked Commissioner Petrie to look at the the construction of the concept plan, see what would be the most economical way of moving forward with one. The the feelings of the mayors and city managers are generally in favor of of the construction of a new facility for a number of varying reasons. Biggest issue is where is it going to be? For the last ten years, we've been arguing, discussing where are you going to put it? Right now, the Willam Warming Center is owned by the City of Dover, but it is in Somersworth. Somersworth has been gracious enough to house it in Somersworth. Their reasoning behind that initially was that they thought at some point we would move forward with the construction of new nursing home and be able to use the old nursing home for a warming center and some transitional housing. But with that plan, now that that's on the shelf, the mayors, Somersworth is kind of losing his patience. And you can understand that. So what I'm proposing is that we make a piece of land available on the county complex behind the county jail, which is the only excuse we already have to build such a building at this point. It would be ten thousand square, ten thousand square feet. It would house one hundred roughly one hundred folks during cold weather events. The municipalities at this point, at least by their leaders, meaning the city managers and mayors have indicated they're willing to pay for it. The only involvement the county would have here will be twofold, number one, whether we would lease them the land, the municipalities the land. Number two, we would have to get approval from the county delegation for the lease. And they are going to have to clean themselves, come up with a formula to support the construction of a new facility. Now, in the concept plan, it has those things that are required by a lot under life safety, sprinkler systems, number of bathrooms, shower facilities, laundry facility, a small kitchen. One of the good things is that if it's located elsewhere, the kitchen would have to be expanded. And there's additional cost to that because but because it's housed here, we may be able to use the jail to produce meals if we can't get any other donations, which is what we were getting at Willam. We had a lot of donations for food. So the mayors and city managers are interested in only running a seasonal cold weather shelter at this point.
I have a question right now while you're right there. Okay, I guess Dover owns the building.
Correct.
And they're going to give us the proceeds after they sell a building.
That's correct. What would happen is Dover put the building up for sale. Well, this is how this is the timing of this is kind of important. Number one, we're going to get all the approvals first. Secondly, we're going to have to ask Somersworth to allow Willam to stay open there one more year. Because there's no way we can get this thing all constructed in this season. So what would happen is the municipalities would have their individual councils vote to support the project financially. Once we work out and negotiate out of a formula that seems equitable. I have suggested to them a formula that would be based on assessed evaluation, at least initially, because governments don't pay taxes, people pay taxes. So that the burden in municipalities would be shared equally from a taxpayer perspective, perspective, not a government perspective, taxpayer perspective. Then a lease would be drafted between the county and ourselves, the City of Dover. We would have to build the building first because you can't shut down Willam and sell it and not have any place for them to go. So we would have to build a building first. And then then Dover would sell the building and give the proceeds to the fund. Now, the county would act in a fiduciary capacity like we have been. And that would allow us to continue to draw down for operating expenses, the state money that's available, which we do now. It's a similar, it'd be a similar arrangement that we have right now, the exact same arrangement. Numbers would shift a little bit, but and so Dover is interested in selling the building and using those proceeds towards the cost of the building. and so Dover's interested in selling the building and using those proceeds towards the cost of the building. So, uh, but question then becomes, how much is the building gonna cost? Uh, and I'm suggesting, I had suggested to the mayors that we, and the city managers, that we would put out an RFP for design build on the building. That uh, we would give them the concept plan, which I have here, so one-story concept plan. Uh, show them the site, where we plan on putting it. Go for design build, let the private sector come back to us. As long as they meet the concept, we, you know, you may have a steel building, I mean, which I would prefer. Uh, after talking with my colleagues, I think we all prefer a steel building.
Well, it's, the maintenance eh, would be a lot less.
A lot less. Or it could be stick built, but we won't know all that until we go through the art, we, we go through the design build process. And see what interest there is out there from, from the private sector to construct, to construct the building.
Those are couple of guys I know won't be interested.
Yeah, okay. Um, the placement of the building, if it's on the county complex, would be where the old Humane Society is. Where the old Piggery, Piggery is now, and we just tear it down uh, and place it behind the jail. Uh, one of the problems we've had the last ten years is that, and this is just the reality, eh, nobody wants this facility anywhere in their backyard. I mean, this is, this is just the reality of it, okay? This is a complex population that we're dealing with. In many instances, we end up with them in the jail. Sometimes, not all the time, but some, sometimes. Uh, now, the question will, will come up as to whether or not there should be a twenty-four seven shelter. Meaning operating three hundred and sixty-five days a year. The mayors and city managers, managers at this time are not interested in doing that. They're interested in just having a cold weather shelter. Now, the construction of the shelter will be as such that when it's, when it's completed, it could be used as a, as a twenty-four seven facility. However, they would have to pay for that. The welfare departments and your general assistance budgets would have to pay for that in municipalities. That's, that's, and that's a debate for some time down the road. They're interested only right now in the cold weather shelter. Uh, at least it's, it's a step and, and it's a step forward. Um, Summersworth has indicated that this is the last year for them. This past year was the last year.
Their last year.
Right.
We're on borrowed time.
We're on borrowed time, right, right. So it's either gonna come here or it's gotta go somewhere. So the plan is, is movable. You can put the, you can put it in an industrial park, you can put it anywhere if you had a piece of land that, that could support it.
Would have access to.
You need access to coast, right? You need water and sewer, you need all these other things that we're gonna keep the cost down, which we have here at present.
And we did, Mr. Chairman, remember eh, at our expense, because in order to feed the humane society.
Right, we brought a line around.
We brought it, we brought the electric line around, because at the time, the humane society was there, you know, twenty-one years ago or twenty-five years ago when we started to build the jail.
Yeah.
So we, we brought the line around because otherwise eh, the humane society would have no power. Right, you know, in, in, in the jail building process. So we paid for all that.
Is that, is that three things or is, or?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, yeah. So tha- that's all back there now. So not only does it have water and sewer, but it also has, you know, the, the, look, the base of electric is supported back there.
So unless the mayors, unless the mayors and city managers come up with a better plan, okay? I've kind of brought this as far as we can bring it. Meaning, there's nothing much more I can do eh, outside of the concept. I handed it to them. They said that they were gonna look at it and try to figure out where they could put it, but I think generally speaking, if there was a place to put it, they'd have already done it a long time ago. There is no place to put it. Nobody wants it. So the only place where you can put it is behind the jail. Now, with that said, they're gonna continue to pay the operating expenses. Okay, and they're gonna pay for the bill. The only involvement the county's gonna have is just to, just to act in a fiduciary capacity.
And, and there is two years of, we, we received notice.
Right, uh, two years of operation.
Well, yeah, that um, governor and council just signed off on um, eh, eh, more money for operating than we've had in the past.
A hundred thousand dollars.
So, so one of the questions, now Summersworth, once we get the building up, what will they pay? Will they pay fifty thousand or, or?
Heck, that's, that's, that remains to be discussed, because what happened with Summersworth's share this year was they, they didn't pay anything, because they did in-kind fire and police department.
And, and we got a larger, a larger amount of money from this.
That's gonna have to be worked out.
That's gonna have to be worked out, because now that all that is gonna fall in the City of Dover.
Yeah, and, and my recommendation is they fight that out. We're out of that.
Okay.
They, they're gonna have to negotiate that amongst themselves, how they wanna pay for it, number one, and the operating expenses. The county's just gonna act as eh, eh, again, as the pass-through, because we can draw down the money from the state. Now, right now, we've been using that state money as the town's contribution, okay? Uh, at some point in time, not right away, some point down the road, the nature of how it operates and the expenses associated with that are gonna have to be looked at, which will include the welfare directors of the municipalities, because right now they're paying for hotel rooms, they're paying for eh, stays and other facilities. Um, we did take an opportunity to look at some of the existing eh, shelters that exist within the county. Um, I kind of like the plan of having multiple facilities instead of having one big giant facility. Uh, a lot of them, there, there's no money to expand them and the zoning doesn't allow it, which is another thing. We pride ourselves in making sure we don't have any poor people anywhere.
You know, right.
We zone ourselves out of welfare, we've been doing it for years, our municipality's been doing it for years. And it's where, and it's rear in its head, and it's not gonna go away. So I think that this, given the nature of everything that's been discussed over the past ten years, this is probably the best. This is the, it's not the best solution, but it's a solution.
Okay.
And so.
So you read through the eh, eh, the motion.
So we did a motion, right.
RFP to.
To put up an RFP, right.
To put out an RFP on a design bill.
Design bill, right.
Okay.
Yeah, on county, on the county land.
On county land.
And now the first step is that the county commissioners agree to that.
Okay, I made that motion.
Yes, okay, second, okay, yeah. All right, so before we call, I called for a question. Do you guys have any questions I can answer?
I think we, I think we beat this horse pretty much. Yeah, we just gotta figure out what the best way to do it.
Best way to do it, yeah. Okay, then, all those in favor then of eh, moving forward with the process, okay? Of an RFP and then of, of course, we'll have to get the lease, once it's desat- once it's drafted, eh, we would have to approve that.
One of, one of the things that eh, this eh, I, when I eh, got the estimate for this eh,
Building?
Building.
Yeah.
Uh, does, does maintenance need an area that they could use? Uh, cause on the end of this building, we could eh, there is, there is more room. It's, it's a little bit bigger than one.
We've got the six bay up there now, right?
Yeah, we could certainly use eh, we have enough.
Wow, because you could put another garage store in the end of it, on, on the opposite end.
Yeah.
And section it off and you guys use it as.
Secure, secure storage is always welcome.
Oh, wow, I, I'm, I'm just looking to see if you need, if, if there's an need.
Yes, cur- currently there isn't.
Yeah, the other, yeah, the other part of this is that I wanted to make sure that we construct the building so that in the future uh, the building has a dual purpose for the county. If something else happens, dealing with the homeless population. Meaning if at some point in future, we are gonna build a nursing home in this county. It's not a question of if, it's just a question of when. And when that occurs, that occurs, the discussion in the future will be, what are you gonna do with the old building? Some people think we ought to tear it down. I think that'd be, that'd, that'd be a absolute huge mistake.
I agree.
Uh, but that's gonna, that'd be a decision for down the road. Uh, our efforts to try to build a new nursing home, we're, we're, we're in front of the curve. People always accuse the government of never planning things. They always do things in crisis.
We just had plans.
Right. We try to get in front of, we, we try to get in front of the curve. There's a curve coming and it's big. It's enormous, okay? People just haven't woke up to the fact and they always accuse the government of operating under, in a crisis mode. Well, that's because no one wants to spend the money upfront to avoid the crisis or try to get in front of it. So it's gonna happen. The question is how and when? And that's gonna be a discussion we're gonna have over the next six months with the, with the subcommittee delegations put together. But in the meantime, this is still real. This is reality. This has, something like this has to occur.
Uh, we're just the middleman.
That's correct.
That's correct, which, which.
That's what we are. We are the middlemen. It's up to the cities and, and the towns frankly. Um, because not everybody's from the cities.
That's what I'm saying.
Usually.
So shared amongst everybody.
Well, that usually, that would be the in a, in a, in a, in a perfect world, the county would just fund its operation and that would, that, then it would be shared equally. It would be shared equally. But um, this is not a perfect world. Right now, I, I'm not quite sure whether the county delegation would vote for that. It's a question that can be put to them. But it also bumps up into, into the property tax caps that we have in all three cities. I had some towns, so eh, these are all open-ended questions that are gonna have to be answered based on priorities that'll be established down the road. But in the meantime, so, so Joe, the the question was a good one. So what would happen is this building would have to be constructed first, then Dover would sell the building in Summersworth, but that back on the tax rolls. But you remember, right now, that's not paying taxes for Summersworth. That was, that would be put back on the tax rolls. We already have the land. The land is not on the tax rolls. There will be no effect on the property tax base as a result of the construction of this facility, because if the facility goes somewhere else, it's gonna be non-taxed. Which was another issue that the mayors and city managers were concerned about. So with that all said, uh, I've got your motion. You guys have any other questions you wanna ask? This is gonna be a process. It's gonna take some time.
Yeah.
And all these things are gonna come back to the commission to make some, you know, decisions about. Uh.
Oh, makes good use of land too, and it prevents it from being, using taxable property.
Correct. And it rips that building down.
And it rips that building down. It puts a brand-new building there that at some point in the future the county can use.
Right.
Now, that's gonna be in the lease. The lease agreement's gonna be, if that building is ever ever not used for the purpose for which it was constructed, that the building would be, would, would revert back to the county.
Just like Hydrant.
Just like, just, just like Hydrant. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'll give them, we're gonna need your help on a few things over there, okay?
Ready.
Um, it would probably be good to get some eh, estimates on cost of tearing down the building for.
What's the soil like there?
I'm sorry?
What's the soil like? Is that?
Impacted clay with some sand.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Surprise, surprise.
It's, well, it's well-traveled. Um, the building that's there currently isn't repurposable because of concrete stalls and obviously it was used as a kennel.
Oh, yeah, oh, you have to rip all that off.
Yeah, exactly. Um, but the, the land over there is perfectly suitable for a building.
And you'll never get the smell on it, don't they?
No, no.
That building's just, it has animals.
Yeah, the building's gonna go out.
You can't get it out. It's impossible.
A hundred and twenty or thirty years with animals in it, so it was a long time. It was a piggery before we contributed to it.
It's been seasoned.
It will season it.
Seemed a little bit.
Yeah.
So, but I can't say this building would be used for approximately four to five months a year and then it's gonna sit vacant for the remainder.
That's correct. That's correct.
Well, I'm sure there'll be other uses.
Well, eh, you know, there's other things that could happen. You could have a hurricane, you could have, you know, a displacement during the summer where we, we could use, potentially use it for housing, for an emergency service.
Emergency.
Yeah, emergency readiness. I mean, that would be available for those types of things that, that can occur. And those things do occur.
Possible evacuation.
Temporary storage.
Back, yeah.
You know, I mean, it.
Evacuation, an evacuation that takes place eh, anywhere along the B and M Railroad. If you had a train eh, follow, you know, follow with chlorine gas or something and, and people had to evacuate a neighborhood, we could use it for that. So there's all kinds of other uses that, that the building will have. Um, that will benefit the public short of just a cold weather.
But the primary purpose is a warming center, a homeless shelter.
That's correct.
And that's gonna be clearly spelled out every step of the way and
That's correct.
Be very clear.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Now, if the politicians, five, ten years from now, wherever sitting here and wherever the politicians wanna change its use, I mean, that's something for a future person, group to decide. You know, that's how it works. Okay, you have questions? Yes, okay, motion endless. So we'll get working on our eh, eh, developing some kind of form of eh, well, we're gonna get them up on the lease. We got, we got some things we did. Getting the RFP together.
Just the authority to eh, eh, issue this with FX.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's there, yeah. That's all part of it. Lea- legal, construction, review, site review, all those things that have to happen.
Yeah.
I think the mayors and city managers will be very pleased because.
Well, well, it's something.
We fix something.
We're trying to fix something, right. That's what, we're just trying to fix it. I'd like to be able to clean up some of these streets. I mean, I know you don't have these problems in small towns, but in the municipalities, we've got issues.
I've seen, I've seen that.
And eventually, we're gonna wear on our welcome with crossroads. Forty percent of their population in Portsmouth is from Stratford County. That's gonna rear its head someday financially. They're gonna say, we're done with this. Welfare departments in Stratford County stop picking up the F A share, the cost of those folks. So we've got a lot of stuff going on here. You know, this is just one piece of a very complex delivery network. It's just one piece of it. Uh, okay. So with that said, we'll get working on those other things that we need to do to keep the process moving forward. Item five, and we get some upcoming events, um, talent and so forth. So we got any old, old, new business that I want to talk about? Just letting you know, the Senate eh, reinstated a three percent increase in, in the property tax cap, I mean, the cap, eh, the Medicaid cap. The Medicaid cap, the three percent increase, which we did not budget for. So we'll have to, to see what happens in the committee conference, which won't happen till late June.
A lot of probably stay because revenue has been, been increased, so that's probably, eh, that's probably a goal.
So depending on the nature of how all, all, how our finances go, we may be calling the delegation back eh, for a supplemental budget. It just depends on what they come up with.
Eh, it, it does appear, well, I know that, that the county attorneys and the public defender's offices fighting it out about a sentencing date. Um, Emily sent me a draft of her motion.
Friend?
Yeah, for the, for the, I, I'm not even gonna venture to say.
I know.
Near as I can go. Yeah, I don't, I don't, you know, I don't want in any way identify this person, um, uh, the person that's in the hospital that we talked about at the executive committee meeting, um, he's due to get out. Well, the last we knew, he's, he should be discharged the end of next week and in the hospital and, and presuming that all works out, eh, we wanna get him sentenced. And we're fighting for that. The public defender's office is eh, asking for the end of July and we're objecting to that. I read Emily's objection and she called me to get some eh, in- information, some numbers. And um, um, I gave her those numbers and I'm eh, so I know that's been filed, so they'll, they'll bite that out at some point in court.
Well, we let the executive committee know that we've got some financial questions on the horizon. They're, they're aware of it, so.
I, I do think it's fascinating that the answer from the public defender's office is that, well, we're not sympathetic.
Right.
You know, because we tried to outline the costs and eh, and eh, and, and how taxing it is on the sheriff's department, no comment intended. Um, and, and their answer is, we're not sympathetic to that. Yeah, Chad, that was very nice.
Yeah. Well, they're protecting the man's constitutional rights, right?
Yeah, right. Well, it doesn't matter. He's, he's going to another jail.
He's going to another jail.
So it's, it's not a matter of, you know.
Right, yeah, I get it.
It's not like he's gonna, you know, wash them out. If we wait a little longer, he's just gonna be released.
Released.
Yeah, that's ridiculous. He's going to, he's gonna go to the state.
Yeah.
Street-hung safe person, the achiever's own, own act.
Yes.
Peter. I'm, I'm sure they're.
Retired.
She resigned immediately. I'm I'm sure they retired. She resigned immediately. So I'm sure there is more to it. Uh you know, you can't go by what you read necessarily. Every newspaper seems to have a different angle. Obviously, we're, you know, we have a relationship with the prison. Um I've known Helen Hanks for twenty years. Or more. Um we did some stuff with the National Institute of Corrections together. And uh way back when we were building the new jail and and um. I I have no idea, although he, her second-in-command was suspended by the governor, so. Uh I mean, all that spelled something.
Like war over the dam.
Yeah. I I I do know um uh Mr. Skipper, uh the gentleman who's going to be appointed for ninety days. He's a fine man, uh great criminal justice experience.
Great promotion?
Yes, sir. Well, I had the motion. What what motion? Which motion did you make?
Uh to go into non-public.
Oh, non-public. Oh, we gotta, we gotta do the questions and comments from the public first.
Oh, we, oh, I'm sorry. Geez, I skipped over that. I thought she'd already commented.
Yeah, she did. All right.
What do we got?
So.
Well, wasn't there another item on the agenda about the county delegation and discussing the nursing home situation?
The the delegation, the executive, the executive committee, in order to create a nine.
Member board.
A board.
Five Dems, four Republicans.
Right, and they're gonna meet on a monthly basis. Their first meeting's uh June thirteenth.
Correct, yeah.
Yes, posted on the website.
Right, posted on the website, and then.
Do we know what time? Nine AM?
Nine AM.
So it'll be zoomed as well as.
Yeah.
I'm saying that's looking. Sure. So it'll it'll be on Zoom as well as minutes taken and minutes shared with the full delegation.
Kelly accepted the request.
Yeah, yeah.
So now is a public conference, don't we?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um. Well, I was rather vocal a while back with regard to the county nursing home. And I have two words for you, George, olive branch. Thank you.
Okay.
There we go. We're gaining, we're gaining.
We're gaining. All right, now I'll take your motion.
Yeah, going along, okay, for discussions personal.
Personnel.
Issues.
Could you join us, please?
Okay, second, roll call, Commissioner Petrie, determination levels, myself, yes, okay.